I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll apologize ahead of time. I had an implant put in today at the dentist. He's gonna call before he leaves the office just to make sure I'm okay, which I am. But I'll have to take that call in time. So if that phone rings, that's why I'll just take a break in the home.
You okay as to the implant anyway?
Yeah, it's great. Yeah, yeah. Everything else, we're already confident that is.
When you answer the phone, you should hold your condom and try to...
Yeah. Actually, I, I, I am not a dentist person at all. I hate going, I hate dental work. It was absolutely, I mean absolutely painless. Just absolutely nothing to it. I've taken two Tylenol when I got out of the chair and that was eight hours ago and I have absolutely nothing from it. So it's great. Any of them dent, don't melt it?
Yeah.
Yeah, could be. A quick smile and you're hoping they'll help.
Weekend at gyms.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. Proper him up the corner.
They need to remake that movie. That's a great movie.
Okay, well, we got some minutes here to approve. We don't have, is that me saying that, that Dan, on September twenty?
We don't have October fourth.
Okay.
The twentieth high was absent, so you two have to do the twenty.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for September twenty or twenty three.
Now we second that. All fair to say aye?
Aye.
All right.
Now, the next one we have, you listen up here.
Right.
That's the eighteen.
Yep.
So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for October eighteen, twenty twenty one.
And I'll second that.
Will you second? All fair to say aye? Okay.
We'll have the fourth to do next week, October four.
Make sure I got the right September seventh, three third out.
Nick, before you came, we just were explaining what, what, what you were requesting from that, the audience. She's already working on that already.
Oh, great. Okay. Yeah, sometimes it doesn't come off very clear in an email as it would in person. So, but I didn't get a chance to walk over and talk to her.
Yeah. Well, lawyers talk like that anyway. You know how they are.
Cause I heard Bruce's suggestion. I'll do what Bruce said. I'll take it out.
Talking about the end of the year and send a letter out. Everybody make a leak, tell them that.
This is what we're making. This is what we're pulling on.
We've got the computer.
I, I just wanna make sure we're protected and, you know, if, if there is a fault, it's on somebody other than us. And that was the concern.
Just you. All right. All right. We have payroll in the amount of one hundred ninety-three thousand, eight hundred thirty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents.
It's up a little bit. I'm assuming that's overtime for Bridge Festival. I'll make a motion. We approve payroll in the amount of one hundred ninety-three thousand, eight hundred thirty-six dollars and eighty-nine.
No, second.
All fair to say aye?
Aye.
Then we just need to acknowledge receipt of the accounts payment report, payroll claims. In the amount of eighty-two thousand, nine hundred forty-one dollars and ten cents. So I'll make that motion that we acknowledge receipt of the payroll account's payroll, um, claim report.
And also the...
All fair to say aye?
Aye.
All right. Then we have claims. In the amount of four hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred ninety-three dollars. Okay, we have the email report.
We haven't, we haven't went ahead and done the claims yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we did. Yeah, okay. Claims, four hundred twenty-four thousand, seven hundred ninety-three dollars and ninety-five cents.
And I'll make a motion. We approve the claims in our four hundred twenty-four thousand, nine, seven hundred thirty-one. If you mentioned it, then we start signing it.
And then we got signed. I'll second that.
All fair to say aye?
Aye.
All right. Now we do the email report. One thing I would ask on this email report, if we could every year, um, where you have enlisted individual, um, areas down there. If we could have last, um, festivals, numbers are two. I just like to compare from year to year and who's down in what area. I know, I know it's mostly Mansfield this time. A S Star was down in this time. It'd just be nice to see what, if that's where it was. I can see how many were down and up here, which are not bad. Couple hundred. Uh, I talk to Todd Payne a lot and, uh, I know the trouble down there was he, he purchased all the property from the gentleman who owned it, who went bankrupt. And there was a conflict between, uh, the then and now bankrupt company and Todd because some of those people had paid that company for, for space. But when the company went bankrupt, all those contracts are null and void. So he didn't have contracts with anybody. Some of them didn't wanna pay again. I also know that a lot of them, their products were stuck in those ships off the coast because most of those, uh, people that weren't there are, uh, just reselling, uh, reselling property. So, uh, I know at Rockville and I think Bridgetown, I know Rockville, we had really record year here. We had huge crowds and I think everybody was, was, uh, record sales. And, um, so it was, it was really a wonderful festival. I did have Thrive, West Central, used to be called, now it's Pride West Central. Do traffic counts in the county before and during, and they're still running. And now I have to speak compared, but I think the number's gonna be really up. We had traffic going both ways out of town, north, southeast and west, back up a long way. I didn't see it, couldn't get out, of course, but I understand that they're going, getting back on thirty-six from the south on fifty-nine was back up to the Ottoman Church there. So that's, that's a mile and a half anyway, isn't it? Probably down at that church. But it is. So traffic was great. People were happy. We had nobody disgruntled that I, we didn't have one customer that was still complaining. And usually tell how busy they are by looking down the aisle and if they're carrying bags, you know, they're buying stuff and they all were. We actually ran out of product Saturday morning and we never run out of that early. So anyway, there's the numbers. So we're down about twenty thousand from, uh, uh, last year into email sales. Um, about two hundred, about two hundred there. That's what the number comes out to be.
And then I can get, get the breakdown tomorrow.
Yeah, no hurry. If you don't mind sending it out.
All this email and provide the breakdown.
I just wanted to see if that verified my thoughts. That was probably mostly Mansfield, but I don't know if that's what it was.
I would say it's pretty close.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks for doing that. And then we have a resolution. Um, I didn't share this with you. Um, I know we have the resolution here, but Roy sent me a, an email the other day. Just kinda knew we were gonna act on this today. Let me find it here. Sure I will. Well, maybe I won't find it. Let me see if it was an email. Maybe it's been, uh, passed. Yeah, here it is. Um, he said, I see on your agenda that you're, um, you all are dealing with this on Monday. Attached is a resolution that will adopt on November twelfth. That addresses what we intended to make happen. I wanted you to have a look at this so that we set the same direction. The intent of the resolution was to lay out our intentions to the commissioners, set the position we were funding. And to make it clear that the sheriff or any future sheriff couldn't increase staffing levels since those folks would be eligible for overtime. And so just letting them know if you had any questions and he didn't. I didn't have any questions on that. And he made it very clear in his, um, commentary that they understand that any change would have to be a mutual agreement between the commissioners and the, and the council before they could just increase. You might have any questions, questions on this?
We just don't have any kind of resolution or policy or anything like that.
All I, all I saw was just letters or something.
Yeah, I probably, he said.
It read like I was supposed to draft a resolution.
Oh, okay. Cause what I read, we were gonna have a resolution. I thought they had one for us already. Okay, so what is needed to do that then?
But did, did you read in his email that they're going to...
Adopt the resolution.
Adopt the resolution on the twelfth, which is two weeks. We'll adopt the same one.
Well, if they provide me the one they're adopting or, you know, they could adopt ours if they don't have one drafted, but... I guess I'll just need to reach out to Rowley.
Shouldn't. I don't think should be that big a difference whether they go first or we go first.
No, we just don't have one drafted.
We just don't have anything we can...
They just need to mirror each other. It doesn't really matter which one goes first, but...
Okay. So you just take care of that then?
Yeah, I'll reach out to Rowley if that's okay with you guys.
Yeah, son. You okay with your man?
Yep.
And the idea is just trying to move away from the comp time stuff and difficulty with that and did people pay you up? And really, employee wise, and they don't think about that because, you know, those things don't come up. You're actually doing better off. If you needed to take time off without pay, if you ran out of vacation time and you, you needed time off. If you, instead of comp time, you're getting paid time and a half or that, but you're actually only losing straight time. So you're still making half, half time pay on that. If you take those days off, you're better off financially to do it that way anyway. Okay. Um, we have agreements with Purdue again. Did you chance see it? Look at that name?
I did. Uh, it's pretty standard stuff as long as you guys are okay with the price tag attached.
She's heading down there.
It's, it's a two and a half percent increase asking it statewide for all educators. Last year we didn't ask for an increase at all, so...
So that one thirteen was like one ten last year or something like that.
So any questions you guys?
Of course, Roy, you probably don't know for sure on your budget, the council. Did they, did they know there was gonna be an increase? You know, if the council knew there's gonna be an increase.
Yeah, I thought it was built into our budget this year.
So it is already the one that they've approved or advertised.
I don't remember the exact amount that they approved, but we've been working on the budget last week.
But as long as she, she, as long as she notified the council and it was a part of her budget, then it should be.
I'll double check to see the total amount approved tomorrow.
If not, they just have to do an additional transfer. So I'll make a motion. We, uh, uh, sign or agree with contract liquidity for extension service contract.
And I'll second that.
All fair to say aye?
There's two, there's two contracts exactly the same. One for Chrissy, one for our office. So I guess we need...
Oh, you just got two pages there. Yeah, okay.
It's just one contract, but two different pages need to be signed.
One contract, two, two per killer.
Two copies. Yep.
I think it's just one signature.
So that way Chris even have coffee.
Here are some beer limes for Christmas, Bruce.
Huh?
Huh? There's some glasses. I don't know which. Got some of those.
Well, you got the appendix one also attached to it though. You have to sign. It's the second page.
All right. Then we have notice of item.
I think that's South Market again.
Okay. Yeah, actually this is a...
US forty, yeah, the station.
Okay.
They'd be going out there by Scott Pitt.
Yeah.
New Scott Pitt. We had got an agreement with them. Then to let us put the left station there at the old shop for a while. Long struggle to get that, get that through. All right. Let me see if I got any business here. All right. I don't see anything. You guys have any new business?
Nope.
Did we do the old business?
I got new business.
Okay.
What you got?
It's, there's, uh, two things. Um, first is the grants. So we got, uh, we got approved for two grants. One is the salary grant, which we get every year. It's about a little over eighteen thousand dollars.
Great.
And the other one is the generator grant for the highway department, which is forty K.
And that got approved?
That will, they won't approve, so now we just have to work through it and make it happen. The other thing would be, um, insurance on the weather sirens. So there's thirteen weather sirens in the county. Seven are owned by the county, but six are owned by incorporated towns. But the county pays insurance on thirteen of them.
Okay.
And so I don't, I don't know why we pay insurance on someone else's stuff. I spoke with George and he's gonna get me the rates. But I was gonna recommend to you guys that we don't pay insurance on the incorporated towns', um, sirens.
Doesn't it make sense for our safety benefit that we continue to pay the insurance so we know it's done, but then we bill the towns for the, for the insurance cost? Is that something we can do?
I, I mean, I would...
It would have to...
Should be...
I mean, that'd be something you might have like an interlocal agreement on.
Does that make sense to do it that way rather than the county then to pay the insurance on those?
It would. So they may, they may also have those insured and it's being double dipped.
True.
Would be my guess.
Those are really expensive things. You remember what they cost? You see numbers on it?
Twenty-five.
Yeah, I thought they were twenty-five grand.
So, I mean, it may be that it's double insured also would be my concern.
Do you have contact people that you can contact? See if they're paying insurance on them now? Or what do you, how do you wanna stand on that? What do you want us to do?
Um...
Well, he contacted George.
My thing is, they're not the counties. So they're not our responsibility. I don't wanna take responsibility for other people's stuff. We don't insure Rockville's trucks. Um, I do understand what you're looking for, but I wouldn't, I mean, that's, that's up to them. If they want it insured, if they think it's worth the money. I, I don't know enough about, you know, when I looked at it, it's, yeah, there's supposedly twenty-five to thirty-five thousand to replace. I don't know what the insurance fees on, if it's ten dollars, then who cares? But if it's, if it's a thousand a year, then that would be...
Yeah, my concern on those is we put those up years ago for the safety of the county, obviously. And if, uh, Mack or Bloomingdale or someone didn't have the money to pay or didn't wanna pay the insurance on, thought they'd be okay, but then they didn't. And then they didn't have the funds to replace them. We would have to make a choice then to leave that area unprotected. Or we buy a twenty-five thousand with, or maybe, maybe a five hundred dollar a year insurance policy would be a good investment on our part if they weren't. That's why I wonder if we can include them on our policy, but we can bill the towns for them and see if the towns pays us.
Probably just sounds like we need to reach out to the towns and see, you know, how, how to go forward with it.
Find out if they're insured.
Right. Cause if, if they're insuring them already, there's no need for us to insure them.
But if they're not, we need to get them on board to do that and we'll bill them for that.
Right. Or they can insure it and we don't have to worry about it, but...
As long as they continue keeping them insured.
That's my concern. I think if they don't let them go.
Right. So that's...
Do you wanna send a letter to them?
I can.
You know what towns up there would be? Rockville?
They're in all the, every incorporated townhouse.
Mica, Dunville.
Seems like there's, what's, six?
Six.
Yeah. Rockville, Marshall.
Middel.
Beattail.
Roseville.
Mecca. Rosedale, Monizima.
Yep.
But you could probably find out tonight.
I can find out about Rockville and Marshall in the next two days, but...
I doubt that that was a requirement when we gave them to them. That's all we did was give them to them.
What are these things called?
Other outdoor weather sirens.
Outdoor weather sirens.
I didn't know if maybe way back when, when we got all this money from...
That's where they came from. That's where they came from.
That there was some part of the grant that just said the county would pay for everything because it was out of grant money. It wasn't out of county money and...
I remember the discussion at the time was that the, uh, the council didn't want to continue to pay for them, but the towns wanted them. So they were given to the towns to take care of. But we don't know if there was a requirement to insure them as they go along or not, so.
I can clean up two of them in the next two days, but, um...
If you got time. That way you would know, so. Glad you said that, cause we could be double dipping. We could be paying, they could be paying to both, two different companies. What can do?
That, that's my concern is I, I, I bet they, at least some of them are probably getting double insured.
Nothing, uh, nothing bad showed up on the cameras you had up for the Bridge Festival? So they, they said they were working okay, but they were...
Yeah, they worked. The wifi, you know, worked. So there's, I mean, three different ways. We, we haven't figured out...
How'd you get out of Bridgetown with wifi? How'd you get out of there?
The, uh, they have, the cameras, the trailers have a wifi, so they were just sending a signal down the road to the fire station and they had a computer there.
Okay. That, that was a, it was a good thing. Glad I had it up there. I asked them if we can get them, get one back out to the, uh, recycling center. Cause I felt pretty good with it sitting there and that people could see when they pull in up here and watch. So if we can get that done, that'd be great. Thanks. All right. Anybody else have any old business?
Nope.
All right. Sheriff will not be here. He's involved up the danger area. Chasing a bag guy, yes. Man has...
Sound like he's in the water or the swamp and everyone is.
Yep. Yep. So he won't be here. All personnel.
Good area to run in.
Yeah. And Randy, you say won't be here?
I didn't say that. I don't know.
I was not here.
I haven't heard from you today, so.
I haven't been.
Do you have anything back there, ma'am?
I can just share something quickly. So a while ago, as part of the COVID recovery grants here at Oprah, we got one for our food security alliance, uh, through Park County. Um, those funds all came directly to us. We're using the community foundation to run those through. Just to let you know, um, we've gone through about half of the grant money of the two fifty that we got. Um, we were extremely fortunate. We found out we could lease refrigeration freezer equipment for some of the resource centers that needed to replace or needed new. Um, so we've been able to, to do that for them and we'll be able to pay that off so that that will be the organization's, um, property at the end of this. So just wanted to let you know, we're doing a little bit more than food. We're trying to make them a sustainable organization. And food and hygiene products and things like that that they're able to stockpile, so.
We probably, uh, now the festival's over, we talked all along about after that was done, we need to set a date to start our first ARP meeting, get that process going for how we're gonna spend that money. And that, so far, and I've included, and we've included, is us obviously, but also Cindy. And, um, Chris is gonna sit in on this as well. And, uh, Roy and John from the council. That'd be a starting point anyway, but we need to pick a date. If you guys got calendars, Andy. Sixteenth or seventeenth of November, Cindy, that, either those dates open for you to meet here for our first time, just to get going? And I'd say probably six or six-thirty. Anybody have a feeling on what time people will be free at home?
I know about a town next Monday, but that's the night. So I'm good there. And the commissioner's conference is at the end of November.
Okay.
So I think that sixteenth I'm okay. Sixteen, seventeen, something to that.
What I'm trying to figure out here, for some reason, it, the seventeenth or eighteenth runs in my mind that I will be here.
Nick, are you available to be involved with that process then?
Yeah. What time did you want?
Uh, really up, up to you guys. It's all retired guys. We don't, we don't have times and days. We can do anything, any day. Guess that could wake me up. I mean, I'm a lazy boy, so I...
Whatever time you want on the sixteenth.
What's convenient for families? Six-thirty, six o'clock? Anybody have preference? Cindy?
I'd say now that probably harvest is over, that a couple of the guys would say later, but I think now that that, they're probably done with that.
Shoot for six-thirty? That's, that's not too late. We won't be...
Well, the time change, it's, it's gonna be dark at five-thirty next week, so, or about that time.
Well, if you think seventeenth might be an issue.
Farmers may be out in the field.
No, I'm saying it won't matter to them now.
I don't have it in mind.
You okay with the sixteenth?
I'm good with whatever you guys choose.
Dan thought the seventeenth or eighteenth might have one, but not the sixteenth. So sixteenth looks open to me. So let's, uh, schedule a meeting and I'll contact all the other people. But let's, uh, shoot for the sixteenth in here at, uh, six-thirty. And we'll head down that road and start, start the process. And that's, uh, again, I just can't emphasize that enough. That is a commissioner decision. And, uh, I don't particularly want it to be a commissioner decision, but it is a commissioner decision. So we have to get all the input from everybody we can and find the best way to spend those. What is it? Three point two eight million? Is that what the number is?
You said six-thirty, right?
Six-thirty, here.
Okay.
Okay. The other meeting I have is I'm meeting with the Apex Health Insurance tomorrow at two o'clock. I sent an email back to Ron. I don't know if he intended to meet in, uh, your office or over here. They're bringing several people. This convenience of being in your office, if there's any numbers we need to pull up here there, do you have enough room for six, eight people to sit around a table there in your office? Where are they going to go here?
Probably. So, you know, I would say, yeah, I've got those two tables.
Okay. As long as we're, as long as we can spread material out. Cause we have a lot of material. I've been working on this insurance stuff for about a year now, since last, or last renewal. And we'll have, uh, I think some good options further from them. Um, there, we have some, uh, money in the, in the line item, about one point three million. We always budget more than we end up spending, which is good. We, 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 uh, budget it at midpoint instead of expected claims. And, uh, so we can adjust that amount we wanna fund for to try to keep our, um, increases, well, keep it, we can keep it at zero. It just takes, we just take on more risk by doing that. But we have some money in the bottom playbook to do that. So we just have to see what kind of numbers they come up with. We'll have some questions to do about the pharmacy. We do have an option. We could change pharmaceutical, um, um, benefit people, uh, this year. There could be some confusion with some of our employees for the first, they say days or weeks, maybe the first couple of weeks. Where they may, may not be covered yet because of the paperwork. It's something you'd like to do in September, but we couldn't meet. She had COVID and then I had COVID, so we didn't meet, uh, with them in September to get that accomplished. I don't like disruptions with people in health, but it was gonna save forty or fifty thousand bucks by doing that or better than, some we're definitely gonna have to look at. The only problem would be those people then who did have that conflict, we just have to pay for their, their pharmaceuticals and they get reimbursed for that. So they'd have to pay a pro, which they not even wanna do. But if that's what we have to do, we'll just have to sign that. But so if you guys are available to meet tomorrow, we can meet. Then that'd be executive session, cause it's just information gathering is all it is. So you're, we're fine with that. We're just getting information through them and whatever. Um, we will be, we can ask whatever questions, but we'll be making no decisions. We'll bring that back to the table here to do that. So, uh, I have that, that meeting set up.
So you wanted that in my office or over here?
Well, I think your office is fine.
That's fine.
Maybe, maybe over here'd be better. We can spread out. They may still be concerned about the COVID thing. We do have some COVID across the hall from you.
Over here's fine too. We'll do...
Why don't we, why don't we just plan on being here?
That's fine.
And I'll let Ron know we're gonna meet. We can spread out. And I'll let Ron know we're gonna be here. We can spread out a little better that way and, and see what we have.
Cindy, this room is open tomorrow, right?
Well, that's what I was gonna say. Let, um, let me go check the calendar.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock tomorrow for insurance and then the sixteenth at six thirty.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Yeah, check both those if you, if you would, thanks.
I can give an update on extension if you want.
Yeah, sounds great. Sure, sure.
Um, so we've had some various uh, trainings and workshops. Kurt just did some training out at Belmore. Um, for the grain bin rescue and he's working on some farm safety training. Um, Gail's got a community teaching kitchen coming up and usually kinda she does a spinoff of that of like budgeting and stuff like that. So she kinda does that annually, but um, her and I have been teaching up at the middle school a little bit to the sixth grader, so it's been.
What kind of stuff?
Um, on mindfulness, um, kind of um, how you can take a step back and maybe take some deep breaths. Try to control your emotions a little bit, so. Good topic for sixth graders. Um, four age norma is open, so um, that opened in October.
You know how many we had last year? She did the six hundred. We're good? Thank you, okay. Six hundred still, you think?
We, we were pushing seven hundred last year.
That's great.
With uh, many four age and, or I think it was like s- six ninety-one, I think was what we ended with. It was, I think we had a, we had a five percent increase.
That's great. So many people just don't really realize what a great program it is for communities like ours. Have a safe place for kids to go and do safe things and have responsibility being taught to them and accountability being taught to them. It's just a wonderful program.
Yeah, we got, I mean, a lot of great volunteers too. I get probably weekly people reaching out and saying, hey, you've got a group of kids that wanna help with this and. I always grab some, so that's, that, that creates a good relationship to them, so. But we are working on youth in government, which I don't know what that'll look like this year because. Our heritage can do field trips and go places, but um, Riverton Park is still, still not allowing that, so. But we are, if, if we do have it, uh, we're looking at December ninth, Thursday, December ninth, so. I don't, I don't know what that'll look like right now, though. I, I hate to do a half in person, half, half virtual. I don't know if there's a way where we could have it at Riverton Park since they can't go anywhere. I don't know if that's a, a way around it. I don't know.
Good idea. It shouldn't matter to anybody. We go there instead of going to the church up here or someplace else.
Yeah, yeah, so.
That's just my opinion, but it shouldn't matter. I don't think, I don't care if I drive there or drive somewhere else to go.
And they've been allowing guest speakers to come in, so.
You oughta be okay with that. It's a good idea.
Might be an option, but um, the ninth and then the backup date would be Monday, December sixth, so.
On guest deal list, no?
Yeah, yeah. Um, and then the extension board meets on Monday to plan the annual dinner, which. I think Cindy's gonna be our, our guest speaker for that to talk about some, some things that she's been working on, so. And that is probably gonna be the sixth or seventh of the week of the thirteenth, so. But we've had sickness in our office, so we've had to keep rescheduling our extension meeting too, so.
Yeah, I understand how that is. My wife and I tested positive. It disrupted us a little bit. I couldn't come to the last commissioner meeting, but. Vaccines did exactly what they were supposed to do. Doesn't keep you from getting it, but just keeps them being bad. And it was, we just had like sinus infection stuff and we went down and got the infusions like old people are supposed to do, so we got that done. It's just disruptive, cause you gotta cancel stuff, so, it's tough. So anybody in the office been out with it, or has your office been affected by it?
Um, not, I've been quarantined, just cause my son's still in school, so. It was rampant at Northview there for a while, so it was, yeah. And then um, Kurt's, had some personal time that he's been out, so he just. Looks like hopefully Monday.
Has the fair board decided what they're gonna do about the custodial?
They have, um, then they're gonna rehire for that position, but I think they'll probably wait till after the first of the year. Um, Greg's, he turned in his final time sheet um, this week, the nineteenth was his last day, so. But because there's, um, I, I don't know if the council will pay for funding through the end of the year. So they're probably just gonna wait till after the first of the year for that position.
I don't know if you remember or not, but we had, there was a special exception made for, for Brian with the, with health insurance. Uh, he'd had a, I mean, Greg, uh, he had a life-changing event which altered his standing, which is hip up, uh, acceptable. But it was just for that, for him only. It wasn't for any, it wasn't for the position, it was for his, him at that position, and so. Those things will come up. We may need to renegotiate somehow with you about how that paying, and I know you pay the county and, and county pays. I don't mind it's exchanged. I don't know how that's done. I remember at the time that I, I started that.
Forward there, um.
Won't be needing for you to do that?
Yeah, it'll be a fair board position. It won't be a county employee anymore.
That will clean it up a lot then. Greg has been there so many years, forty-eight, forty-six?
Yeah, somewhere in there.
So a long time, yeah, a long time.
I don't know what his exact start date was.
All right, anything you need from us?
I don't think so.
Okay. Cindy, you got anything for us?
Yeah, sorry, I have two more quick things for you. Um, just to, more awareness than anything, since Park County's name's labeled with these two things. Uh, we're doing two different assessments uh, across the county. The first one is a housing needs assessment. And you'll probably hear about this one, uh, because Purdue Extension Committee Development is helping us lead that effort. So that's already kicked off. We're gonna be in the process of doing a survey. Um, all residents welcome to participate. You'll be seeing communications about it. Um, it's gonna be an online survey. We will have paper available if people would choose to do paper. Um, and this is the assessment that was funded by the redevelopment commission, Town of Rockville and Partnership Park County. Um, so those are the entities that pitched in to make this happen. And then the second one is a, it's gonna be called early. Early education um, in childcare. So it's good, it's gonna be taking a look again across the county for our childcare needs assessment, basically. Is it, you know, are we looking for care for our zero to five before they get to school? Because the schools are doing programs or, you know, where are our gaps across the county? And then where are the education-wise or like preschool type things? So um, that's something that will be, I have my first call with a group tomorrow. Um, so we hired a consultant, Transform Consulting. And um, we have two sponsors uh, for that effort, so the, the community foundation. And Scott Pett have pitched in to pay for the consultant to do this assessment for us. So basically, we're gonna be developing a strategic plan for the county. Um, there's just a lot of interesting data points in there when we look about childcare and work commutes and various things. So I think it's gonna be a really interesting piece when we're done. So just to back up on the housing, that should be done in March of twenty-two and the childcare should be done in June of twenty-two.
So it's gonna come back with needs on the childcare stuff. What happens next?
Well, that's what the plan's gonna tell us, what we should be doing. So, and I'm gonna make up something. I'm not. It's go anywhere, but in the sense of like if they say, okay, you know, you need a county-based childcare system between, you know, for ages zero to three. Then we certainly figure out what it is. If it's, you know, you've got seventy percent of your population commuting out of the county for work. And because of timing, it doesn't make sense to create a, a new childcare facility in Rockville. Because they're not open early enough for workers to use. Then it, then it says, that's not what you need. It's building capacity, maybe it's some other support pieces that need to follow up. So until we know what the report says, I really can't tell you, but it will be action plan based. Both admissions will be, um, at the end of the housing assessment, we will be doing a housing summit. So that's gonna be just, you know, public meeting for people to come in here, all the results. And uh, community development from Purdue will be inviting several funding agencies that they've been engaged with in the past regarding housing. So we're, we're working on some invite-only focus groups along with the survey. And uh, making sure we get some key individuals in the housing summit.
On the partnership side of it, has there been uh, any movement on the bank building, Old National Bank building?
I'm gonna get my real estate license, so I'm gonna do it. Yeah, I mean, I have been uh, taking a lot of folks through there and um. The directive that the Realtor received early last week is that he is to forward all offers on the building. Regardless if it's pennies on the dollar from the asking price.
So they're ready to move.
They're ready to move, um. Kind of pitching to some people, you know, like create a little partnership among some individuals that they wanna go in and put in an offer, um. Got another investor I'm showing it to tomorrow. So we'll see, we'll keep working on it.
I appreciate you, thanks. Anybody else have any old business? And then I guess we're ready to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn? Uh, fair say aye?
No.
Okay, thanks, folks.